I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I bet these guys do that every day.
We also said, "Pledge to the West Virginia flag."
Would everyone please stand to say the pledge to the West Virginia flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of West Virginia, which serves as a constant reminder that our citizens are always free, which stands as a symbol of our majestic mountains, fertile forests, rich tanks of coal, and the pride of our people.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission, January the 20th, 2011, at 10:00 a.m., is now called at order. Members present Donald C. Whittenclark, Charles McCann, President, Charles Vance, Commissioner, Thomas Ramey, Junior Commissioner. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on January the 6th, 2011, at 6:00 p.m.
Sir, move. Second.
Move in second. And all yes, move. Motion carries.
Next thing we have is Pam Crumb with her 4th grade class at Ranger Elementary. They're going to start the proceeding of naming the Ranger Bridge. I said, "I guess I should've," but I don't know her married name.
We got requested as a commission by a member of the family to give consideration and what can be done to, you know, just to recognize the family and name the bridge. And I guess something just thought, "Well, rather than just name it, since it's so close to the school, I suggested that maybe the 4th grade class at Ranger get involved in this." This was a year ago. And since that is the beginning of studying West Virginia history and just started to trow in and didn't realize, you know, what all was going on and all this at the school in the spring with all the testing and all that, they had to work it out. But I think that what, you know, the goal has been met was to get the kids involved and learn a little history of their own community. So at this time, we'll turn it over to Pam.
Okay. Jacob, Mr. McCann and other members, we have composed letters to you and we will also be sending those to the delegates. I'll be having the children to go on the Internet and type those in so that they'll also have a copy at Charleston with their letters. But they'd like to present their letters to you, a little bit about what they've learned about Aster.
Mr. McCann, Lincoln County Commissioner, I request that Ranger Bean Span at County Route 10 slash 2 be named after Aster Agnes. He should because he was responsible, helpful, and caring. He was helpful because he helped build a road from Gil to Ranger. He was responsible for, because he did not look at people's mail or take it. He cared because he raised into four children. He also gave them candy. He had three horses that he rode. He carried a horse to beat the snow off his horse's hoof. The snow got up to six inches high when the horses got winter's on him. He cut holes in the blanket so the sores were open. He carried mail on a horse for seven or six years. He was a important man in our community. I hope I commence you to name the bridge after Aster Agnes.
Thank you.
Dear Mr. Ramey, I request that the Ranger Bridge, Ranger Bean Span, County Route 10 slash 2 be named after Aster Agnes. I feel that it should be named after him because he was a helpful citizen in our community. For example, he helped build the road from Gil into Ranger. He was also a cook on the railroad. He delivered mail for 42 years, seven of which was on horseback. He was a member of Ranger for 57 years, and he helped his neighbors by delivering. Commodities playing Santa first year helping to build roads. If some who was unable to get them, he would pack them home. My friend Blake said that he would give candy to little children on his mail. He gave some to Blake's grandma. Everyone was excited when they saw him coming, mostly kids. That is why I think we should name the Ranger Bridge after Aster Agnes.
Good job.
Dear Mr. Ramey, I request that the Ranger Bridge, Ranger Bean Span, County Route 10 slash 2 be named after Aster Agnes. I feel that it should be named after him because he was a helpful citizen in our community. For example, he helped build the road from Gil into Ranger. He was also a cook on the railroad. He delivered mail for 42 years, seven of which was on horseback. He was a member of Ranger for 57 years, and he helped his neighbors by delivering. Commercials playing Santa first year helping to build roads. If some who was unable to get them, he would pack them home. My friend Blake said that he would give candy to little children on his mail. He gave some to Blake's grandma. Everyone was excited when they saw him coming, mostly kids. That is why I think we should name the Ranger Bridge after Aster Agnes.
Good job. Thank you.
Dear Mr. Ramey, I request that the Ranger Bridge, Ranger Bean Span, County Route 10 slash 2 be named after Aster Agnes. I feel that it should be named after him because he was a helpful citizen in our community. For example, he helped build the road from Gil into Ranger. He was also a cook on the railroad. He delivered mail for 42 years, seven of which was on horseback. He was a member of Ranger for 57 years, and he helped his neighbors by delivering. Commodities playing Santa first year helping to build roads. If some who was unable to get them, he would pack them home. My friend Blake said that he would give candy to little children on his mail. He gave some to Blake's grandma. Everyone was excited when they saw him coming, mostly kids. That is why I think we should name the Ranger Bridge after Aster Agnes.
Good job.
Dear Mr. Ramey, Aster Agnes was a caring person. He was a mail carrier for 42 years for Ranger. He delivered mail through rain, snow, and 90-degree weather. Not only that, but he did it on horseback for six or seven years. About how, think about how hard it was to deliver mail in that weather on horseback. This is the only, this is only one reason why Ranger Bridge, Ranger Bean Span, at County Route 10 slash 2 should be named after Aster Agnes. Another reason the bridge should be dedicated to him is because he was a jokester. When he, when he did his run, he would play around with the children. His daughter Odessa said that when he would get in order for chicks, the next day he would make chirping noises outside. The kids would come outside thinking the chicks were there, but he was just playing. He was really, really funny. Aster helped out his community. He would help people when they needed it. He would help them in their gardens because times were hard back then. You had to grow and raise what you ate. So if someone couldn't do that job, he would take his time just being generous and make sure they had something to eat. Also, if people couldn't go and get their commodities, he would deliver them. He was a very helpful and kind man. As you can see, Aster was an amazing man. To me, it seems he deserves to have a bridge dedicated to him. He made sure his community had catalogs to order things they needed, chickens to eat, and made sure they had a life. So that's why this wonderful man should have the Ranger Bridge dedicated to him.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramey, I want the Ranger Bridge, Ranger Bean Span, at County Route 10 slash 2 to be named after Aster Agnes because he was a helpful, caring, and kind man. Aster helped to build the road from Gil to Ranger. He delivered mail and commodities on horseback for six or more years. He went through snow, rain, and storms to deliver the mail on time. When riding his horse to deliver the mail, he had to knock off snow on its hooves and as, and it, as if he, his feet froze in the stirrups. During Christmas time, he would dress up as Santa Claus for the kids. He delivered mail three days per week to 32 mailboxes. He never missed a day, even if he was sick. Aster was a kind man because he helped a man at home so he wouldn't get hurt. Not, he not only delivered mail, but he also delivered food and clothes to people.
That's all that we have this morning. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to come, and we hope that you, as a commission, take that into consideration, the hard work that Jordan have done, you know, and to get people to come in and speak to our students was indeed an honor. They learned a lot of history about the community that they did not know before. So we appreciate the opportunity to come over.
Well, we appreciate you guys. And one, there's, you know, always something to be learned. And if you can't read it, you may talk to people and find out facts and information. But, you know, in Ranger and a lot of places across the country, across Lincoln County, at one point, we'd almost had to self-survive as a people because you couldn't travel very far, you couldn't move very far, and you didn't have any money. So you had to depend on one another and survive within a community. And I think I heard you all mentioned those kind of things. And the part that, you know, it's the human part, that here's a guy that was doing his job, but he was really doing a lot more than that. He was trying to help his neighbors and his fellow men. Just another piece of information, back in, of course, I've known Pam for a long time. She started out in the school system working as a school aide, and then she decided she wanted to go get an education. And then she went on to college and got her degree, become a teacher. And to me, that is so important, that you have a chance to work with somebody that's dedicated and values education. I about forgot all about that, but I did remember sitting here listening to this. But, you know, another thing that you may want to think about, and I know we've got one Ranger resident or two here, when Guyan Valley High School existed as a high school, a large, more than their share based on population, of the students who went through Guyan Valley and graduated were honor students. We used to marvel at this at the board office, how many of their kids became valedictorian or salutatorian or honor students at Guyan Valley. And it just goes to show that these things that we're hearing here today are deeply embedded in that community. And I don't want to ramble on, but I do have something, you all being 4th graders, and I thought if everything worked out and you all showed up here, I wanted to just take a minute and read something. I think it's appropriate. It was to me and to my heart and to my mind. This is a piece of what our President Obama discussed and talked about in Tucson. And I'll just read to it because what I'm gonna read, the piece that really touched me, was through the eyes of people like you. And I'll start. "And I believe that for all our imperfections, we are full of decency and goodness, and that the forces that divide us are not as strong as those that unite us." That's what I believe, in part because of what a child like Christina Taylor Green believed. Imagine, imagine just for a moment, here was a young girl who was just becoming aware of our democracy, just beginning to understand the obligations of citizenship, just starting to glimpse the fact that someday she too might play a part in shaping her nation's future. She had been elected to her student council. She saw public service as something exciting and hopeful. She was off to meet her congressman, someone she was sure was good and important and might be a role model. She saw all this through the eyes of a child, undimmed by cynicism or vitriol that we adults all too often take for granted. I want to live up to her expectations. I want our democracy to be as good as Christina imagined it. I want America to be good as she imagined it. All of us, we should do everything we can to make sure that this country lives up to our children's expectations. As has already been mentioned, Christina was given to us on September the 11th, 2001, one of the 50 babies born that day to be pictured in a book called Faces of Hope. On either side of her photo in that book were simple wishes for a child's life. "I hope you help those in need," read one. "I hope you know all the words to the National Anthem and sing it with your hand over your heart. I hope you jump into rain puddles. If there are rain puddles in heaven, Christina is jumping in them today. And here on this earth, here on this earth, we place our hands over our heart, and we commit ourselves as Americans to forging a country that is forever worthy of her gentle, happy spirit." Thank you.
You know, one thanks, me being from Tim Mall Creek, I'm not too far from Ranger. And I think one of the things that we all talk about is how we should have pride in our county and be proud of our county and things like that. And I think we not only need to do that for what we're doing today, but for what Aster did before and people like you. You know, we, there's a lot of important people that done important things that helped us get to where we're at. And the only way we want to know that is to do, just like you guys, study history, learn about these people that did things that brought us to where we are today. And I'm very proud that you guys would do this, and I thank you guys for coming over here.
You know, I know most of your faces because I visited the school different times because I was on the Board of Education, and most of you know me. And for you to be here today, it's a rewarding meeting because it brings to us the, back to the level of what's important, and that's you. But I think what you need to realize is, Aster, if he was here today, would be proud of each of you because of the way you handled yourselves. You're here for the right reason. And after traveling this county, visiting every school, we have some of the best schools, some of the best kids, the best teachers in the state. But I want to tell you, Ranger is at the top. And Ranger's only at the top in this county and this state because of each of you. And I want you to take away from what Mr. McCann read and understand, one of the most important things that you can do is understand, it's very important how you treat other people. But it's also very important that you respect and care about yourself. And always, if you carry that with you, move forward, try to do the best you can in school and understand that anything is possible, and you can be anything that you want to be. The only thing that will stop you is yourselves. So good luck, and please come back to a commission meeting.
Thank you. And you all go up to, when you go to the school, tell everybody to keep washing their hands because it's really...
We sanitize every day.
Thank you all. Give them a hand.
Next thing on the agenda is the Lincoln County Commission Goals for 2011. Commissioners, you know, the last meeting, you all had review, had 2010, you got the grade of 2011.
And we have put those out a couple weeks ago and asked for information, comments, and discussion before we ask for a motion to adopt.
I'd like to just say one thing. The only addition we have to the goals and objectives, we have water and the main things that people in this county need, and they look for us to help bring. But the one addition this year is, we have put back on the list the focus of this commission to advocate and do everything in our power to get the Hatfield and McCoy Trail System to come to Lincoln County. And I think that the reason we decided to do that was to, we have some people here from Hatfield and McCoy, and glad to have you, but to show the people from Hatfield and McCoy and the people of Lincoln County that we're serious. We understand the economic impact that, and recreational opportunities that that will bring to the county, and we're ready to step up and be serious.
All right. With that said, motion to adopt the goals.
Sir, move.
In motion and second. Being all yes, motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is dealing with the Hatfield McCoy. And at this time, as you are aware, we have appointed two new board members, and one of them is here. Don't see the other one. I think he's made it, Mr. Atkins. But Mr. Burton is here, and at this juncture, I'm going to turn the program over to Mr. Burton.
Since our last report that we gave to the commission, I have been seated on the Hatfield McCoy Board of Directors and committee I was assigned to, excuse me, is the Field Operations. And I have been in close contact with the Executive Director of Hatfield McCoy, Jeff Luss, Chairman of the Board, Art Kirkendall, and the Deputy Director of the Hatfield McCoy Trail System, John Fakety. And we have been pursuing the Hatfield McCoy Avenue of bringing it into Lincoln County. It's on the high priority list. I have assurance from the Chairman of the Board, the Executive Director, the Deputy Director, and the Field Operations Committee that it is on their list of things to do and get done. So I won't take up any more of your time, as I've asked representation to come and speak to you today. And we have the Deputy Director of Hatfield McCoy, Mr. John Fakety, and we have Mr. Jordan Cox from the Ray Hall Transportation Committee. And Mr. Fakety would like to just briefly address the commission as to where, what, and when. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you for having me here. Jeff Luss wanted to be here, but he's in New York. So I put a little presentation together. Jeff's usually the mouthpiece for the trail system. Jordan and I do most of the field work, do most of the landowner negotiations and stuff like that. I think we've got a pretty good little presentation. We won't take up a lot of your time, but I'd like to give you a little history of Hatfield McCoy, some of the processes that we go through to develop a trail system in your area. So if you would like to ask. I've got a little packet that's got some information for you to look at after the meeting. We'll briefly, briefly go over some of those things. The Hatfield McCoy Trails first opened in October of 2000 with 300 miles of trail in three counties. Since then, we've grown up to six trail systems in five counties. Over that time period, over that 10-year period, we've sold over 100,000 user permits. We've learned a lot. All of our trails are on private property. We don't have one inch of trail on any type of federal or state properties. We don't own any property. It's truly an agreement between the Hatfield McCoy Authority and the private landowners. And in that packet, I gave you a mapping agreement and a license agreement, and those are the two documents that have to be executed before we can move forward to develop trails within the county. We're a nine-county project area. We, like I said, we have the trails in five counties. We've got four counties to go. You guys are at the top of the list. The number one ingredient to developing a trail system is property. And I think we've looked all over the county, and there's not a lot, a lot of large landowners. I think we have about an 8,500 to 9,000 acre tract in the Harts area, which is currently Wildlife Management Area. There's a lot of issues there as far as public recreation areas, hunting, and all that mixing together. It's totally up to the commission on how they would want to pursue, you know, properties within their county, whether we want Wildlife Management Area or a trail system. And we're here for you. We want this project to succeed. We'd like to see the county get its trail system and enjoy some of the economic development that these other counties enjoy. We've got a lot of small landowners around that 8,000 acre tract, but the really small landowners. It makes it really tough when you're, you've got to get a signature from each person to be able to go on their property and develop a trail system. When we put in a trail system, we like to have anywhere from 60 to 100 miles of trail. Our visitors have traveled from every county, I mean, I'm sorry, every state. We've had several countries come in here and ride. When they come to a trail, they want to experience a couple of days worth of riding. They want to spend two or three days in one area and not see the same, same trail. So that's kind of an overview of Hatfield McCoy Trails and, you know, kind of where we are with the Lincoln County Trail System.
Do you have any suggestions at all that might be, that you maybe haven't, I haven't heard, maybe Sherwin-Farish or others, but how we, with any suggestions you all might offer us, how we might pursue working with the owners of this tract of land to make it usable for Hatfield McCoy?
The owners, we have pretty good relations with the Hartwood Forest Land Group. We've got trails on their property in other counties. They are a friend of the trails, but as I understand, they are in some type of a lease agreement with the DNR for Wildlife Management Area. As I said, I think it's totally up to the county with what's best for the county. Is Wildlife Management Area what the county really wants as far as, you know, what benefit does it bring versus what benefit would the trail system bring? I think it's a decision, my opinion, should be the county's, the county's decision, what they want within their county. And I think the first step would be to possibly, to the landowner first, to make sure they would agree. And I think they would pursue the DNR and go that route. We've talked about it somewhat at the, at the office with our Executive Director and others. There may be a way we can work with the DNR and also have the Wildlife Management Area. We've never done it before, but I'm sure something could be worked out. We don't need the entire 8,000 acres. We just need 60, 70 miles of roads. We don't need the whole map.
Johnny, I know you mapped the Sand Creek area there prior. Would you have 40 miles of trails if you could get those landowners into Sand Creek area?
It was 25, 30 miles.
What it was?
25 to 30, but it included probably 25 landowners.
But what basically you're getting to, we really need this big ugly public county area, some definition. We're going to have a Hatfield McCoy Trail Systems here. We're going to have some kind of expansion into that area, do you think?
It's a, yeah, that's a security. I mean, the larger the land company, the easier it is, or larger the land, easier it is to develop a system that's sustainable. You take 50 landowners, just say they all sign on today and say, "Put a trail system on there." You guys can look at those maps. I provided some map, user maps. One land company or owner wants to develop a gas well on their property, or timber, or maybe extract coal, all they have to do is give us a call, and we shut down that section of trail. And that may, with a lot of small landowners, that could be your main artery and your only way into the pond of trails. So when you have a large landowner with 8,000 acres, usually it's easy to move that trail and not shut it down. And that's the last thing you want, is to spend all this money on a trail system, market a trail system, visitors... a trail system, visitors book rooms to come here and stay, and then a land company call you and they shut your whole system down. And that, that's, we've dealt with some of that, but not a lot because most of our trail systems are on anywhere from ten thousand to a hundred thousand acres of property.
Does the Wayne County system now, are you still waiting on approval from Corps of Engineers on it? Because you all have that map, right?
We met with the corps and the colonel had told us that they wanted to do a feasibility study and they wouldn't start on until two thousand twelve, so that was a...
So we need to move while we've got a shot at it.
I, I, we're willing to move forward with you, I mean, we'll go to, you know, we'll go to the capital with you, meet with the governor, DNR, whatever you guys need us to do, we're more than willing to do it. The more trail systems we put in, the bigger the pie gets, the better it is for Southern West Virginia. I don't think we can have enough. They sold a million ATVs last year, we're only selling thirty thousand permits a year. So I think we, we could grow ten times the size we are now and still have enough business for, for all of our communities.
I know, I met with Governor Tomlin a while back about this very thing here and he has some, he understands the problem with the DNR and I, I think what we might want to do first and things is set up a meeting with him and the DNR, I mean, just kind of us all hash it out and figure out what works and what won't, because he's very supportive of it and I think he realizes the impact it would have on Lincoln County if we didn't do it.
Right.
But I think the timing, like we're talking about, we need, if we can, to get this approved where we can get our system in and being Wayne County, I think they're probably going to be tied up for quite a while over there, even the mappings, you all have done that, I think getting approval over there could maybe be worse, so let's try and get approval through the DNR.
We have a federal government.
Parrish, you got something?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, John and I were talking earlier, we've discussed this in the past, and the big issue is hunting, you know, a lot of people like to hunt. But I think what a lot of people don't understand, and John and I discussed this and he can reiterate this, you can hunt, but you have to be five hundred feet off the trail system, just like the law requires you for a building or a school or any other public highway. You know, you can access hunting off the trail system, but you must be five hundred feet off your trail system to hunt. So you say, you know, there's a lot of this area that wouldn't be in trails, that wouldn't be available to hunt, and I think that's a big misconception maybe that hunters have that they think, well, through the Hatfield McCoy Trail System, then that entire area is off limits to hunting and this is, this is not true. And John, he can address it from here.
And we, you know, some of our land companies do issue permits, not many, but they do issue hunting permits and some hunters do use our trail system to get to where they're hunting. So they'll use our road, but then once they get to where they're going, they have to get five hundred feet from that. That's state law.
But you don't have any trails that is in any kind of agreement or arrangement with DNR?
Never, no, we never have.
Well, and the other thing too about that hunting, I think that applies more to areas we look at big landowners, like the people up on Sand Creek won't have to worry about people hunting on their land. I don't want people to think that's going to be a problem because we, you know, Hatfield McCoy is basically monitors with rangers the, the road systems. If you get off on private land, there's a fine for that. And so I don't want people that own, the individual property owners up there in Harts to think that if the trail system goes through, they go anywhere they want on their land. That's not the case, but in the case we're talking about, it would help us a lot if we could arrange with the DNR, big ugly, to allow this in public county area anyway. But I don't want the private landowners to let people come on their, on the trail system and jump off on their land anywhere they want. They can't do that. But the situation we're talking about, public county is in that public county area, the big landowners are valid.
Has there been any studies as to economic development in relation to the amount of money that the trail system brings into an area versus what hunting would bring into an area?
I can, I can actually, the Ray Hall Transportation Institute and Marshall University put, put a study together. As I said, Jeff is the numbers guy and the speaker and he can, he can give up, give you all that information. I can tell you that our visitors spend three to four days when they do visit West Virginia. They're spending on an average per person, I think it was two hundred and fifty dollars per person each day. So the best way to, to see the economic development or to understand is to go see it. Traveling to the town of Gilbert, you had twenty-plus new businesses pop up in town. They've really embraced the ATV idea and, and they're, they're one of our number one communities that have really, every other house on Main Street, there's a lodge or ATV shop or a new restaurant. But I can get you that document, it's actually on our website on trailsheaven.com. You can download the entire document and it gives some pretty good numbers. The hunting side of it, I'm sure DNR does the same though.
You know, I, I just want you guys to be able to understand that I'm a new member of the commission, I, I follow the Hatfield and McCoy Trail System and, and not only the commission, but I think the county as a whole, we've kind of missed the boat because I believe we should have already had a Hatfield and McCoy Trail System. And I don't know what's happened, but I want you guys to go back and understand that we are dead serious. We want this to happen and we're willing to work and make it happen. And, and if it means sitting down with the DNR and working out an arrangement or some other avenue, we will do what it takes to make that happen because in this county, there's, there's not a lot of industry and the people here are hungry to see progress. And when you travel across Southern West Virginia, many of the counties have experienced strip mining and some things that aren't real pleasant to your eyes, but Lincoln County is one of those counties in Southern West Virginia that's still a beautiful county that is intact and I think that we are in the position to be the, the best trail system in the state. And I, I agree with you, I think that if Lincoln comes on board and we can expand, and I see other opportunities across Lincoln County, not just in Harts, to expand the trail system and I think that as Lincoln expands and attracts more people, it's good for the whole system, it's good for the whole Southern part of the state. And just understand we're serious.
It is, I mean, we, the nine, nine counties, the, we are, by law, we have to put trails in nine counties. You guys are one of them. Your project is fully funded, we've already applied for federal grants that will fully pay for your trailhead, the design, the signs, everything that has to do with your trails. If property's secured, there's no reason why we couldn't have a trail system in three months. The, the hardest part on developing a trail system is the property and getting permissions to be on the property.
And, you know, we had some thoughts too, once the Lincoln County system was going, Wayne County system, we wanted to connect them the two together.
There's a lot of opportunities.
Right. Because I know we've done that in some of the other counties.
We were talking on the way up, it's a possibility that you could even connect Harts to Chapmanville. I mean, have those two communities, that's what people want. They want a destination ride from one town to the next, get gas and come back.
At this juncture, I think on the agenda, we have an item to further strengthen, in our opinion, the Hatfield McCoy in Lincoln County. I'll introduce Ron Gregory to you, Ron's going to be, he's on the agenda to be employed as an agent to help us and help Hatfield McCoy, help get this thing put together. We, as Thomas says, we don't want to leave anything uncovered that my helpers did at the working bench, that the time we need to do it is now, pastime, and that the economic impact has to be, everything I've heard has always been good and positive, so seeing me like we just need to work through the DNR issue and that's one of the specific things we're asking Mr. Gregory to do is help us with that issue.
Because we'd really like to work it out with them, but you know, we've gone in situations with DNR before where they didn't agree on what we wanted done, it's like with our shooting range and things like that, and we've had to take it on our own. And, you know, I don't see that even if the DNR wasn't involved, if some, for some reason we could remove them from that as far as managing that area, because I don't think they do a whole lot like they used to anyway as far as managing it. I don't think they have a shooting range operation or up in Big Ugly or anything like that. We need to look at, we can work something out, when we can't, we need to look at the steps that might be necessary in, in us talking with Forest Land Management, DNR as far as us managing that area like, like we do some of the others, because I, I really, as long as those people can hunt up there, they're going to be fine with it. And whether it's the DNR that's controlling the hunting or whether it's Forest Land Management or whatever, it, it, it's really, it wouldn't be, make a difference to them, but the fact that, it would make a difference whether we got a trail system or not. And I know Harts is poised to, to grow and, and we're not only a connector like with Chapmanville, but down to Ranger and things like that to help these people. Those are all doable things if we get past the DNR as far as their management of that area and things. So I think, you know, we need to look at it from two things. One is working with the DNR. If they're not willing to allow us to do this, then we need to look at what steps need to be taken for us to work that differently without being so...
Anything else on Hatfield McCoy, anybody in the audience got anything to add? Hope it's positive.
Well, we certainly don't, I mean, we're not in the business of shutting hunting areas down. We think that hunting, fishing, ATV, hiking, horse riding, all that, we're all on the same team, you know, and I think we can all work together. But I think that eight thousand acres is your, is your GM.
Well, we appreciate you guys coming down, appreciate Parrish coordinating this and we'll be moving forward, I believe.
Thank you very much.
Last thing on the agenda is the Harts, that and the McCorkle Community Center.
We have undertaken, as we mentioned in the last meeting, and have information shared and things like that. Hopefully, our intent is to keep these community centers going and particularly in one in Harts, I think we've got a issue coming down the road with the Board of Education that not sure where we're headed with that because a couple of years ago, the discussion we had was to, once the new school was built, which I think will be, maybe in the middle of next school year, that the present middle school would become an option for the county commission to determine if they were interested in taking over the building and the gymnasium and leaving the ball field for the new school as an activity area. And we certainly are interested in that, but I think the other part of it is what do we do with the existing building we have? And we now have titles to that building with one exception and that's basically says if it's ever needed for a school facility, the school board will be able to take it back. And I guess that one of the issues that I think that this commission needs to clear up with the school system before we move another direction is we need clear title to the Furlsburg School or the old thing we have now, the Veterans Community, Harts Community Center for two reasons. One is it, it may be that we may need it, it could be a piece of, of something, maybe even work into the Hatfield McCoy scheme, or maybe one of those things that we need just to save in order to put over our direction in the larger building at the Harts Middle School. So we're concerned about that issue and any, any things we can come up with to resolve that, we need to get with the school board here soon so that we can figure out what we're going to be doing, because as I said, in the budget that we put together in March is going to have to reflect how, what are we going to do with these buildings as we move forward. And in particular, if we have the opportunity come in the middle of the school year to get into a larger building, of course, we need to be thinking about, is that what we're going to do, because I think that's what the community wants, they want us to be able to save that facility for different reasons, but one of them is to preserve the gymnasium for the community. But I think it's important that we as a commission get into that and look at. As to the McCorkle, I think that they're off to a good start there, but I'm sure that as we've experienced at Harts, that we will have some growing pains and things of that nature, but I think anytime that we can offer something in the community, I think it makes the community have more pride and, and take care of things better. And at the McCorkle Center, I know we've got Buster here and Robertson, Crime Watch, and they have stepped up to the plate and made sure that, that the center's been left open, it's been utilized, they've been there to make sure that it's, nobody vandalizes they do, we have a better chance of knowing about it. But I think it, with this kind of stuff, it just makes you know that people in Lincoln County, they love their county, they want to take care of it. I think our job is, is not to waste county money, but to be able to help bring these things about and make it happen. We've got the issue on the agenda later, dealing with McCorkle as far as the feeding program, it's been successful and I know we got Mr. Parker and Ms. Tomlin here today and they've done a good job working with different people, trying to make sure that the feeding program continues there and we want to seriously look at how we might be able to help continue that. So there's lots of possibilities, but I think the commission just has to be careful how we work these things, that we don't overobligate ourselves financially, but at the same time, make it work to help these communities, because when you take the schools out of the community, ain't no doubt, it's the lifeblood of keeping those communities alive. I think what we have seen as a commission, if we sort of stepped in and trying to help keep them alive in a different way, because it's activities that makes the difference. So it's just one of the...
Along that same line, I wanted to let the commission know that I really think what's, if we can get the, the middle school or wherever we can do it at, I think, I'd like to see a wellness center established there. I've talked to Valley Health, the people that employ me at Harts Health Center, they're really interested in it also, so that would, may help us in our decision as far as if, if we can have something like, because people really need it in more place to go to and work, and work out and things like that. Valley's interested as far as working with the commission and, or the school, whoever, in trying to set something up like that for them, because it's, it's really nice what we have here in Hamlin, but it's, it's also a little far to go, especially in the wintertime when you need to, to be exercising, things like that, so if we could work together and try to establish a wellness center there, I think it'd be important.
Have they talked about money?
Well, I, I haven't talked to any, we haven't talked to any money because I didn't know which direction we were going to go as far as facilities and whatever. If we had the area that we could utilize, I'm sure they would come up with, with coordinating things and helping us with some things on that.
Next thing on the agenda is Huntington Archery. Commissioners, we received a letter from the Huntington Archery that says, we Huntington Archery are in the process of obtaining a building to provide our arches a place to shoot during the winter season. We were unable to lease the building that we were previously using in Huntington. We are in the process of leasing the building in West Hamlin at Little Buffalo Creek. The building has no heat, we will be using the heating system from the old building and the parking lot needs, needs to have gravel on it. This would provide the people of Lincoln County and surrounding areas a place to shoot their bows and meet with other archers. With the recent interest of archery and schools, this would be a great place for kids and adults to shoot their bows. Any help from the Lincoln County Commission making this happen would be great and appreciated. Our proj- projected date to open will be January the eleventh, two thousand eleven. We will be having competition shoots Friday and Saturday nights. Thank you Dixie Lamber and Huntington Archery.
Okay. Wonder if we could, as a commission, ask our prosecutor to devise this, since this is a little different, it's definitely a worthwhile thing and just make sure that we're considered legally to help them with getting things done, but maybe table this issue till we can sit down and talk with Jackie and see if it's...
Yeah, I've been in Huntington Archery for a lot of years now, you're likely, but I, I think they charge a fee to belong to the club, but I don't know that...
It's not a profit-making, I know that, it's, it's just a recreation.
I just hope that they have an ability by the way, to use a type of, you know, state just for, for, and things like that, because I know, I know some people up here belong to that in Lincoln County, but a lot of partners don't have a pattern of that.
Well, the girl that wrote this is, guess where she lives? Ranger.
I, I think it's a worthwhile project, but I agree, we should check with the prosecutor, so I'll move to table this until the next meeting until we...
I'll second that.
Direction.
Motion second? They have an issue on Huntington Archery, if we can get a legal opinion. All yes, motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda is Rick McDowell, their paint or, or a green project?
Welcome, Rick.
Phase three.
Phase three? Yes?
House Senate.
Uh, I've been at the House Senate.
Oh, but we have...
We'll, we'll do a big report in a little while.
I'll have something to...
Oh, well. Oh, well.
Picking up steam.
Let me, let me defer to Judy.
Well, Mr. McCann has something.
An update on the house sun.
Mr. McCann has something. Sean, go to mind, do you need a phone? It's just picking up, the people showing interest, so please, appreciate the art.
I want to give you an update on our wastewater project for you folks. Ranger, we've been putting in septic systems in people's homes, you know what I'm talking about with septic systems? Right? To take care of stuff from your toilets and your bathrooms and your showers and all that. And the reason we started it was because a couple of years ago, we were testing the water in the creeks over in the Big Ugly area, which is over the hill, past Big Ugly into the Left Fork from where you guys are. And we found that the creeks and the streams had a whole lot of E. coli in it. You all heard about E. coli, sometimes you hear it on the news. E. coli's a bacteria, it can cause you to get sick, but warm-blooded animals often have E. coli, have that bacteria in the gut. And so if they go to the bathroom, that bacteria passes out into wherever they go to the bathroom. And what our thought was, was that because people's septic systems weren't working right, okay, this E. coli was getting into creeks and streams. And so, you know, if you play in the creeks and streams, or swim in it or anything, or get it on your, you know, get the water on your hands and get it in your mouth, you could get that bacteria into your body. So we knew it wasn't a very good thing, and the commission has worked real hard to try to put in new septic systems, because what we found were the old septic systems weren't keeping all the sewage where it was supposed to go, so it was leaking out into creeks and streams. So that's, so I'm going to want to give the commission a quick update on what we're doing with that. I guess probably there's a couple of things on dates here, but the important thing is on the next page, and that's that we finally got our friends at the DEP to tell us we could move ahead with phase three. So this is another twenty-four, probably twenty-six homes in the Left Fork which would have systems. DEP's committed a loan agreement, they call it a loan agreement, but it's a loan forgiveness agreement. So even though they say it's a loan, we never have to pay it back, it's a great kind of loan yet, for, at this point, we're talking about nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, give or take. The final amount is going to depend on what the bids are and do the, the budget itself. The next page has the rough draft budget, you can see how things are broken out, but like I say, the very first thing where it's got instruction there, that's definitely an estimate, because we don't know what the bids are going to be for that. So once the bidding process is done, we'll be able to finalize the budget, get it in, and get it approved. The next page shows you the bid schedule. At this point, the final bids from companies to put these twenty-four systems in are going to be due Wednesday, February ninth, at ten in the morning, and then at one o'clock, we'll have a bid committee that will open the bids. It's a two-envelope system, so if people have all the correct stuff in the first envelope, we would move to opening the second envelope. One of the things that would be helpful to have from the commission, I think, because we're, we'll be doing some of these things in between commission meetings, would be a motion to authorize President McCann to act on behalf of the commission when it comes to signing agreements and contracts and stuff in between meetings. We then bring it back to the final.
I'll make that motion.
So the motion second to authorize President of the commission to work with Rick carrying out this project, oh, yes, vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Then the, next is, there's an actual resolution with specific language that the DEP would like the commission to approve, which gives President McCann the authority to act on the commission, and this is a pretty broad resolution, but this is what they'd like on any and all federal and state actions as they relate to planning, designing, construction of wastewater facilities.
We have a motion to adopt this.
I'll second.
A motion second to adopt this official resolution, Lincoln County Commission, oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The one other thing I wanted to bring before the commission is Camp Lakeview, we're working on that with the Development Authority, and we would like to take a grant request to the EQT Foundation. Still not sure...
The gas.
I, I know it's, but I don't know what EQT stands for. Haven't been able to find that out.
No.
I looked, but it is, it's a natural gas producer, it's in the Appalachian region, so it's Kentucky and Pennsylvania and Virginia and West Virginia. We'd be asking them for around fifty thousand dollars to increase our environmental programming and design at the camp. And what we, one of the things we do, we put in a changing building, we don't have a changing building out there, we've got a trailer that we use for that. We put in a changing building, it would have solar panels on it, it would have composting toilets in it, and then we also use money to hire a part-time person who would develop more outreach for the camp and outreach into the school system and post-secondary places to try to both get people in there to use it, but also to sort of promote green design and that kind of stuff. There's a copy of a resolution for that, too.
Entertaining motion to adopt the resolution in support of Camp Lakeview. The motion in second, oh, yes, motion carries. I hope you get the fifty, though.
Slow to wait. If you don't care, I have first and clean copies of both of those two resolutions. That's all I have, right now.
Next thing on the agenda is Craig Mannes with the Guyanese Waterway Destination.
Welcome, Craig.
Well, Chris, just came in. Thanks, sir. This is the trailway system that we briefly discussed in the last meeting on the, on the, we're seeking a grant within a trailway system down the river, which will allow people to float in kayaks from RD Bay to Danville. It includes four counties, London, New York, Lincoln, and Cabot. We have a public meeting scheduled on the twenty-second, Guyanese Waterway, to get the public's input on the, the trailway system, kind of inform them where we are, get input back from them.
What time is that?
That's at six thirty.
Six thirty, perfect.
If you'll see here, we've, it's a draft copy. What, one of the things that we need to do to be eligible for the grant is to have the Guyanese River declare a scenic waterway, and that's what we're working on now, and that's what I'm making sure the commission is, pass a resolution in support of the designated Guyanese as a scenic waterway, believing that that would be a positive thing for the county and also help us receive the grant money for that. So I'll ask the commission to pass that resolution and also give Mr. McCann the authorization to sign the documents for the resolution.
Okay, you heard the question, Craig, is, so, motion second to adopt the resolution in support of making the Guyanese River from, what would be Wyoming County, from headwaters, wherever it starts, Bailey Dam to...
Uh...
All the way to Canada.
Let's see, we have some kids in the audience who'd like to ride a kayak. Actually, Ranger, there'll be a punch-out at Ranger, so that's a...
We do want to say that our children have the opportunity, because of county extension overseas, last year to actually participate in riding kayaks and canoes that they'd never had a chance to do before because of Greg the Doll, is the wonderful name.
So they know where Camp Lakeview is?
Yes, they know where it's going to be. Yes, they enjoyed it last year.
Also, just quickly, hazard mitigation, there is a meeting scheduled on February the third at five o'clock. That's prior to the commission meeting, and there'll be a notice of intent to file with those that support a buyout program.